This is the North Miami Planning Commission for Tuesday, October the 7th in council chambers. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Roll call the board members, please.
Kevin Seifert.
Present.
Charles Ernst.
Present.
Kenny Eich.
Kenny?
Present. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Jean Castor. Jason James.
Present.
Bill Pravatell.
Present.
Have we heard from Jean Castor? No?
Uh, no sir.
Absent for the time being then. All right, uh, let's go to the approval of minutes.
As a point of order, Mr. Chair, the staff, staff would like to announce an amendment to the agenda, which is the next item before the approval of minutes.
All right, let's go ahead, make the announcement.
If, if we may, um, we would like to have the discussion item, uh, that involves, it's the last, very last item.
It's the ship funding.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Yep.
We have Marie here from the office and, um, we would like to have her presentation. In, in the event you have any questions or concerns about the amounts, she'll be able to cover those for you, but we would like to put her in front of the agenda so that she's not here half the night.
I don't have any problem with that, uh, and I, the commission has no objection, so we'll take the report first.
Thank you.
All right, now let's get to the approval of minutes of September 2nd.
Move to approve minutes.
All right, Mr. Pravatell moves for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chief Eich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes stand approved. Ah, well, let the record reflect that Jean Castor has arrived.
How are you, buddy?
Now, do we have enough chairs? Yes. Okay, we're all set. All right, Madam Secretary, uh, signed minutes, thank you. All right, so let's take the, uh, report first on the ship funding. State your name.
Marie Jean Ference, Housing Manager for the City of North Miami.
Welcome, Marine.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As requested by the member of staff back in May, uh, we have presented, um, the proposal for the ship program to, for the allocation for the 2014-15. As you're requested, I just came here to let you know that we were awarded $173,000, $173,909 to be exact. Three percent of that, which will be $5,217.27, will be allocated for, towards administration. $50,000 will be allocated for first-time home buyer, and the remaining funds will be the amount of $118,691.73 will be toward, allocated towards single-family rehab.
Very good, thank you. Do any members of the commission have any questions from Marine at this time?
No.
I do.
All right, Jason, uh, Jason?
Yeah, how many single-family homes do you think you guys will be able to rehab approximately with that, those amount of funds?
What, uh, we usually use, uh, the ship funds as a last resort because we leverage CDBG Home and Ship. So, um, altogether, we can spend a maximum of $25,000 a home. We are, we are able, we are allowed to spend $25,000, but that doesn't mean this is what we'll spend.
So you're forecasting out of this four and a half home rehabs maybe?
Four, yes. Whereas last year we only used, well, last year we did three, last fiscal year, we did three whereas we used like $12,000 in one, 14 in the other. That doesn't mean we must spend $25,000 for the home.
It's just a forecast of what you could, based on need.
Yes.
All right.
Marine, that, that cannot roll over to the next year? Does that have a time limit on it, or?
No, well, we will hope that we'll have more because $118 is nothing comparing to the need, I mean, the demand that we do have. So there will not be any, um, no.
And with the first-time home buyers, does that work the same way? You only give a percentage of that $50,000?
Yes, it isn't as needed basis. Whereas last year, last fiscal year, we only had $5,000 versus this year, we have 10 times, so we will try to maximize.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Very none. The Chair accepts the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, any communications? None? Continue public hearings, none? So now we move to tonight's public hearings, PC 11-14. "A Resolution of the Vice Mayor as Acting Mayor and the City Council of the City of North Miami, Florida, Approving the Conditional Use Permit in substantially the attached form, Transferring nine bonus units from the Neighborhood Redevelopment Overlay, NRO, District Secondary Pool of 1,000 floating residential units for the vacant property, Generally situated at the southwest corner of Northeast Sixth Avenue and Northeast 123rd Street with Miami-Dade County Folio numbers 0622300310030, In accordance with Article 4, Section 4-204 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Land Development Regulations Providing for an Effective Date and for all other purposes." Staff report, please.
Good evening, Planning Commission Board Members. The staff has recommendation for the Conditional Use Permit, uh, application. Staff requests that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed resolution for a Conditional Use Permit in order to transfer nine bonus units from the Neighborhood Redevelopment Overlay, NRO District Secondary Pool of existing floating residential units in accordance with Article 4, Section 4-204. Uh, if I may, I would like to just give a brief overview of the project and the application. Uh, the focus of this particular application is Conditional Use Permit, to apply for a Conditional Use Permit for bonus units outside the Neighborhood Redevelopment Overlay boundary. And since that's the focus, the Planning Commission has been supplied with information related to the Conditional Use Permit, the Land Development Regulations related to the Conditional Use Permit, and the Conditional Use Permit itself. That is the focus today. Um, the site plans and renderings are also supplied with the staff report, and they have been provided as a courtesy from the applicant so that the Planning Commission members would have an idea of what the project would look like. Um, the site plan, um, the, the, the site plans and renderings and all that backup information will go through a separate Development Review Committee, DRC, process where the details then will be, uh, discussed through the committee process and, and building permit, uh, review and, and so on and so forth. So if I may give a little background about this project, this is a vacant site at the southeast corner of Northeast Sixth Avenue and 123rd Street, no, northeast 1, uh, 23rd Street. And it has stayed vacant for the past 20 years or so, to say the least. And it has been underutilized and it is a, um, project that will come in and redevelop that area, or rather, that corner of, uh, of the, uh, intersections that I just mentioned. Um, the bonus units requested are nine out of a, an existing pool of 973 units. The units that were, um, that existed before were 1,000. There was a previous application that applied for 27 bonus units, so the balance now is 973. So out of 973 existing units, the applicant has asked, requested nine to be transferred. So that would leave us with 964 in the secondary floating pool of non-residential units, uh, neighborhood redevelopment overlay boundary. Uh, the project is a four-story, 20-unit multifamily condominium building. And, uh, the applicant has also applied for, um, uh, LEED Energy Efficiency Bonuses and Transit Oriented Development, or TOD bonuses. And they qualify for, uh, they have, the application qualifies for that. And we have calculations and, uh, numbers provided in, as part of the staff report. Um, and we also have the Conditional Use Permit, which is at the end of the, um, staff report, and I am going to read into record the, uh, Conditional Use, uh, the conditions from the Conditional Use Permit itself. There are total of nine, um, uh, conditions. Uh, number one, that the applicant submits final precise plans and applicable landscape plans to the city's Community Planning and Development Department, Development Review Committee, DRC, for review and approval prior to obtaining building permits. Number two, that the applicant shall file a unity of title with the Community Planning and Development Department to unify the three lots into one consolidated parcel. Three, that the applicant shall provide registration receipt from the U.S. Green Building Council Coalition, USGBC, showing intent to achieve LEED certified or equivalent designation prior to council consideration. Four, that the applicant shall provide a copy of appropriate certification from the USGBC to validate the proposed green elements of the development prior to obtaining final certificate of occupancy. Five, comply with all other city-county regulations that it, as it relates to zoning, parking, landscaping, school concurrency and utilities. Six, density bonuses. Pursued to Section 4-204, the applicant shall be granted additional bonus density through conditional use based on the project incorporating all of the following elements. And then it's followed by a table which identifies the, um, the LEED, um, bonus, which is 7.5 dwelling units per acre, and the TOD, four of seven, uh, bonus items which qualify for five dwelling units per acre, making a total overall bonus unit to be 12, units to be 12.5 dwelling units per acre. Number seven, a building permit shall be filed within one year of the date of the Conditional Use Approval by October 28, 2015, or the approval shall be null and void. Eight, Conditional Use Permit shall expire October 28, 2015. An extension of time may be granted by the Director of Community Planning and Development for a period not to exceed six months, April 28, 2016, and only within the original period of validity. Nine, coordinate school concurrency review with Miami-Dade Public Schools prior to obtaining building permits. Um, having said that, uh, staff would like to draw the commission, um, the Planning Commission's attention to a few, um, um, updates to, or revisions to the text of the staff report. I will draw your attention first to page three of nine of the staff report. And as you go to paragraph number two, last line, it says, "The 331.5 required parking spaces, parentheses, Section 4-1402." It should be section five.
Page three of nine.
Two of nine?
Three, three of nine. Second paragraph.
So it should read section five, not four.
For the record, it's section 5-1402, Scruton's error, for the record.
After that, if you go to page four of nine, um, the staff has already provided a sheet which, which is like this with the blue and the yellow highlights. And those were the, uh, up, revisions or updates or corrections, if you will, that were made to the table, just to clarify what the staff has presented as far as calculations are concerned. Um, so it should reach, read maximum density permitted per acre with bonus, and that is 28.8. And, uh, when you multiply 28.8 by 0.68, it would be 20. And which is what, uh, they are, um, maximum units permitted, uh, for the subject site. And the other, um, correction was an equal to sign, which would be TOD bonus equals 12.5. Um, there's, uh, a couple more, not many. Uh, page seven of nine. Item number nine, second to last sentence in the paragraph. It reads, "Florida Green Building Coalition Rating System." That should read, "United U.S. Green Building Council Certification." That is what it should read. We're just keeping it, uh, language consistent.
Yes, all references to the Florida Green Building Coalition should read U.S. Green Building Council. That is the permitting, uh, green or LEED, um, agency in this case.
And on the same page, when you go down to conclusion, second to last line in the paragraph, again, it's the same issue. It says Florida Green Building Coalition, FGBC. It should say USGBC. Uh, moving on to page eight of nine. Uh, the table, uh, you see the table, and if you look at the, uh, third from the bottom, the row, which is third from the bottom, which says, "Project Open Space Recreational Humanities, Five Dwelling Units Per Acre," that should be taken out. It, it shouldn't be there. And the next row after that says 17.5, it should say 12.5. And there's just one more thing that's under the Conditional Use Permit itself, which is, I believe, Exhibit A. So this is going to be page three of Exhibit A. And it's the same table on the top of the page. And if you look at second row, it says FGBC. That should read USGBC. For the record. I think I have, that, that, I think that's about it, yes. Um, so to the Planning Commission, if there are any, uh, additional questions or clarification or presentation requirements, the applicant is here to, to, uh, to present, uh, additional information.
Well, before we get to the applicant, I have one question for staff based on what we dealt with last month. And that is the 2% set aside for art in public places pursuant to the 1980 ordinance that the city has on the books. And when we deal with the recommendations and, and the, uh, the itemized issues that you went through, uh, what is the enforcement structure in place now for that 2% set aside? And how will you incorporate the issue of art in public places in the staff review?
This particular application is only for, uh, Conditional Use Permit approval for bonus units.
That's true.
So the art in public places would be not the purview of this particular application at this time. It would certainly be, uh, a purview at the DRC level.
And the DRC is the?
The Development Review Committee level where the detail, the site plans and drawings that are presented here are for conceptual purposes. So to give us an idea of what the project will look like. Uh, when the project goes through the site plan approval process and Development Review Committee process, that is when those detail-oriented questions will be addressed at that time, in addition to other things.
I, um, I also want to interject that, uh, the art in public places is precisely that. It's for public places. Uh, this is a pro, private project. Um, and whereby you can, through the DRC, perhaps, um, ask some kind of artistical, um, structure or something artsy for the project. Uh, I believe that that code is specifically for public properties and, uh, public structures.
Right, but where does the funding come from to do that? Does it not come from all of these projects that have been on the books for the past?
It would come from, it would be a set aside from a contractor who's going to build the, a public, uh, structure like the Joe Celestin Center.
So you're saying that, that that 2% is, can only be taxed to public facilities?
Yes, sir.
That's an unfortunate way the ordinance was written.
Yes, sir.
Because a city of our size doesn't build very many public buildings, does it? Right, yeah, uh-huh.
It's modeled after the Miami-Dade County ordinance.
That doesn't mean it's a good ordinance. Far from it.
Uh, again, we can, uh, nudge the prospective contractor on a, on private property to, to do that, but it would be more so aspirational, as opposed to mandatory. Absolutely, I, I wholeheartedly agree with that.
It, it would make a lot of lawyers rich. I think it would be challenged a lot in court because of private versus public.
Actually, if we take a look at some of the, uh, plans and proposals from the, uh, those last series of workshops that were completed, there's a lot of ways you could incorporate an artistic item and element into a housing project we've never asked for. It's long past time we should start doing that.
Um, by the way, just to mention, uh, coincidentally, uh, in front of the CPND building, there was a piece of art just recently installed for all to see, so we are moving in the right direction as far as art is concerned.
Oh, yes, in the right direction, of course. The truth is, that was there before and they, we just had it cleaned and painted and a little bit nicer mounted.
No, there used to be a fountain there, a water fountain.
When are they gonna fix that and strain it out, that piece?
Well.
Didn't have money for that, oh, sorry.
You know, it's, uh, it's something that we, we, we need to address that issue as we go down in life here. There needs to be a, a return to the importance of art in architecture, something that tends to get glossed over. And we wind up with one tacky little building after another in this city. No offense to whoever the, the architect is for this one. I, I'm sure he's sitting there and, and is nominally irritated at my calling this a tacky little building, but, uh, let's be candid about things here. All right, let's hear from, who shall speak for the developer, the presenter. While we're doing this, we'll open the public hearing so that anyone wishing to speak after is free to charge forward.
Yeah, it's a point of orders, sir. The, uh, this item is quasi-judicial in nature and pursuant to the Land Development Regulations, so I am, uh, compelled to give the oath to anyone desiring to speak on this item this evening. Anyone desiring to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Only one person.
That's it, then the rest of you will not be permitted to speak, so you know that.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, you may proceed.
State your name, sir, and your business.
My name is Douglas R. Walker. I'm Senior Vice President at San Consulting Group Architects-Ingeieurs.
Ah, you're the, the architect and designer for this?
Yes, sir.
Well, enlighten us.
Okay. This is a four-story, uh, condominium building with 20 apartment units. The apartments are two bedrooms, uh, and two baths, and they're, uh, 885 square feet each. There are eight of them, uh, 12, uh, there are eight, uh, three-bedroom units.
Can you speak up, please?
They are 1,125 square feet each. The front entry feature.
Speak into the microphone as, uh, all this testimony has to be recorded. Thank you.
I'm sorry. We have a pool, landscape area, and, uh, parking provided for a handicap, and we're also providing for parking for the hybrid, um, par, uh, cars. And we also have parking for a, uh, a bike rack for bikes and paths around the, the entire complex. This is the site plan with, it includes the landscape, uh, low-level lighting, uh, for around the sidewalks. And this is the floor plans for each of the floors, starting with the ground floor and the second, third, and fourth floor, all the same. We include elevator for, uh, residents and one stair will go to the roof, and there are two stairs total. These are the elevations for the building, uh, front, rear, and side views. These are the, uh, two-bedroom and three-bedroom units. We're providing a bus shelter at the corner of the property, which is on a hundred, it's on, uh, Northeast Sixth Avenue. We're planning to put in, install a bus shelter there at the bus stop as part of our transit-oriented development. We included the three bus routes that pass by the site. And this is our landscaping plan. We plan to use zero landscaping, zero-scape landscaping. And these are our, the plants that we've selected at this time. If there are any questions?
Members of the commission, do we have any questions for the architect at this time?
I'd like to share some observations, uh, if I may.
I don't doubt you do, Mr. Pravatell. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, uh, thank you, everyone. I, I, I know that this is not necessarily a site plan review, but it's really hard to address the issue without, and we have all the material in front of us, without touching upon that and, uh, and factoring that into our overall decision. And I think before us is another one of these cases where, um, the applicant has looked at our rules and regulations and pretty much has gone by the book, has qualified by the book. Our Community Planning and Development reviews the project, and they also see that it meets all the, the numbers for the project, and therefore it qualifies. They've done their job. But this project is, is sort of the way it's laid out, is a little bit of reminder of, of what I've said for many years now, and here it is, it, uh, rather glaring example. We have a fairly significant portion of land, and even though it technically meets the open space requirements, um, it doesn't look like the, the open space is 20%. Uh, actually, I, I sort of scaled it off and affirmed that for my own satisfaction, even though it doesn't appear that. But here's a case where I believe the development team, uh, is limited in height and therefore built up to the height, and therefore then said, "Well, that's my massing, and now we will put in the, the parking that's, that's needed," rather than taking it from below the building and lose some of their potential of, of construction. And what do we get? We get something that is so really, um, almost counterproductive to your ability to, to market this, uh, that it's, you know, it's, it's very unfortunate. It's our city regulations, again, coming back to haunt us and shoot us in our own foot. Here's a case now where, look at how much of this site is covered with, with asphalt, paved over, and then we have the footprint of the building and a minimal amount of landscaping out by the street. To the extent that there's solid landscaping on the south side, it's so paved over that the pool is crammed between the building and the street, on 123rd Street, making it neither an enjoyable place for the pool, an enjoyable place for the public to be violating their privacy, even though there might be some plants to screen it, um, nor is it even getting south light, which, which, again, that, that could be debated. But because of the, sort of the, being cornered in. But because of the, sort of the, being cornered into having to do surface parking, we get this end result. And it's, to me, it seems extremely unfortunate. And I'll just, I just sketched something while I, while I came here. Here's, here's an alternative, and you may have come up with this, if you had the option to do it. This is showing that, and the eight and a half by eleven happens to be the same size as your reduction, that if you had a building addressing the corner, turning the corner, coming in, parking underneath, you would have retained so much space below, in, in the backyard, for green space, for usable, reasonable pool that would have gotten the south light, that would have provided privacy, that would have been more marketable. Yet it's the, it's our own regulations that have done this. It, it has cornered them into, into not lifting the building up because it penalizes them. And I've called on this time and time again, that the structured parking below new structures, residential or any, of any type, should not count against the zoning. And I have a feeling that they might do that. Is there a chance that if that was the case and it did not count against your height, that parking might have been underneath where it's safer, where it's better ventilation, where it's more marketable, where it allows freer flow, where it's more secure? Might that be the case?
We were, we did look at parking below the building. That would have raised the building up to five stories.
Would you have still been in conformance? No.
Well, I believe that we had, the height was, was not really as much a problem as fitting in the number of parking spaces that we needed.
Right.
Underneath the building wouldn't have provided enough space for thirty-three parking spaces.
Not everyone has to be under it, they could be over on the side as well. But you can get the majority of them, the people that actually own units might want them underneath. And maybe the guest parking is off to the side. But it wouldn't be as, as, you wouldn't observe it so much from the street, from the neighbors, from the apartments themselves. Just look at the marketability of these apartments, that so many of them basically look across, particularly the ones looking to the south. What they have to look forward to is a sea of parking, a sea of paving. I don't think that helps the marketing, and I, I want, I want this project to be as successful as possible. Don't want to stop it, want it to go ahead, want it to be really something that people will be attracted to it and, and get the best bang for their buck, and the development team gets the best bang for their buck. And I, I can see where maybe we set up these parameters that do not accommodate that. And things could change and they, they could be accommodated. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Prevotell. From a design concept, your points are well taken. And it is unfortunate that we give people such a hard time over underground parking. However, on the other side, sir, you might consider Mr. Prevotell's comments.
I surely will.
A curved building with a floor of parking, maybe there is a way to stay within the allowable heights and give you your twenty units and have a little bit more creativity. Because when we're selling these as opposed to renting them, nobody wants to overlook a parking lot.
Right.
You know, let's face it, the most valuable land in New York is that which overlooks Central Park. I don't like to overlook greenery as opposed to paving. So perhaps there's some room there for you to reconsider some of that. Go ahead, Charlie.
Looking at the scheme, and maybe Mr. Prevotell could, could also add into this. If this project were split in two, and then rather than looking at a single unit, we would look at two or maybe three in a creative way that we could develop park, underground parking in two units separately or three units separately with that concept in mind, and still come up with your, your open space and...
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know if that's, I don't know if it's dividing it up does too much to it. I mean, it could be done in two blocks, it could be square blocks, it doesn't have to be rounded, I just didn't diagrammatically what it might be, just to show a, a quick flow through and in and out and to be able to preserve so much of the open space, the green space. But I think it might, from a development point of view and management point of view, to have it in separate buildings loses the, the efficiency of design by having a singular lobby, the two fire stairs at the end of the hallway. The, you know, a single gate going into the parking, a single gate going out of the parking, if they decide to have gates. And, you know, to have maybe a single approach to a pool area as opposed to multiple approaches. So it's, there's an efficiency.
This is kind of a preview is what I think you, you may see down the road with, with regards to the design. So we're just kind of giving you an overview of what, what you might, might face with, with this current design. Right, if, if that's of any value to you.
Yes, we're not trying to do you, we're just trying to engage in some creative thinking here. We want a better project, if we can get one, and the developer wants to be able to sell these units. And the nicer the property layout, the faster they're gonna sell.
That's right.
And, you know, it's much easier to buy a building that overlooks a park than it is to buy something that overlooks a parking lot.
And so. We overlook it, it's that, the happier the occupants will be, and the happier, more satisfied they will be, the better citizens they will be, and, and so on. I, I believe at least. That it's, this is something that, that has ripple and repercussions down the line. And it also starts to maybe inspire the rest of the neighborhood as it starts to redevelop.
All right, let's move down the line. Do we have any comments from Mr. Castor?
I certainly agree with Mr. Prevotell. I think there should be a way for the building to be able to occupy more land space. I mean, I think there's a lot of wasted space in the parking area. And as you mentioned, Mr. President, overlooking the parking, I don't think that's an appealing view. So certainly, I think you may want to revisit your sketch to see what can be done differently. And as for the height, I wish we could, the city could do something to increase our height. But I'm not sure exactly what can be done regarding that.
Not unless the comprehensive plan is first amended. The development cannot be in conflict with the com, the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan sets forth a maximum height requirement of seventy-five feet for the R five district, residential district. Therefore, the, the, that document first has to be amended, and then the LDR will follow. And then they would liberalize the height somewhat to whatever it's...
Which does raise a question, what is the height of this project now?
It's four stories.
And he's allowed seventy-five, you're telling me?
That's the height, the maximum height.
So then underground parking is absolutely feasible. Very feasible and desirable. You might want to give that some consideration, you've got the height allowance.
Right.
And it would be a shame not to take advantage of it. Take some of that parking lot and turn that into a, into a nicely set up green space would be a much nicer view for those that would live there. And certainly more marketable.
Might also, if I may point out, the, the major area of parking, which is to the south, imagine yourself living in this building and parking in this location, how exactly are you getting into the building? There is not an immediate access way or lobby way here. You're going out to the sidewalk and in and around, or if you're over by the street and by northeast Sixth Avenue, you'd have to walk all the way down and come through this, what is really not a prominent entryway. It's really like a fire stair exit to go through there. So everybody, nearly every car, every occupant, is going through sort of a secondary means of access. And I, I don't think that's gonna help the market value. I think it, it's, to me, it would be a little bit of an annoyance to have to go that kind of distance and over that much paving to be able to get into a secondary entrance.
You know, truly, you want to have your condo units grow in value, not shrink after they're sold the first time around. So we would suggest that you may want to seriously argue for the benefits of underground parking and better utilization of green space outside the building. But having said that, we recognize that issue was not before us. Mr. Reach, do you have anything that you wish to add?
I, I concur. We discussed this, something similar to this yesterday at the CRA. And I like to see a project that's gonna look good, that's gonna be marketable, and gonna increase in value. And I, I look at this project and it's, it's, it's within the parameters of our land use ordinance. But I'm sure we can improve upon it and have a great, great-looking building over there. And one of the things I'd like to see is underground parking enclosed, done nicely. To make it very attractive, that you don't see the cars parked under there, a little glamour to it, make a little glamour to the building. You know, it, we, we talk about the scale of economics and people with disposable income and where we're going with the city and where we're going with this building. You know, I, I, I see some beautiful affordable houses downtown Miami. And I don't want to see North Miami become a mundane dumping ground to just drop a four-story building and that's it. Take it or leave it, and in a couple of years, it ends up to be rentals. You know, I, I, I want to see a nice project, and I think we can do a heck of a lot better with this. I, I realize personally, if I, if I could give you ten stories over there right now, I wish I could wave a magic wand and give you the ten stories and let you put in something very glamorous, very affordable and marketable. I just think this is on, it looks good as far as four stories go. But what is it gonna be five, ten years out? You know, let's, let's make something with some pizzazz in it, something that's, hey, you want to be proud of. I want to drive down that street and say, hey, that's a good-looking building. That's, that's how I feel about it.
And the bar is already so low in North Miami.
Yeah, I mean, it is.
That's the embarrassing part of it.
I, we'll discuss that after the, if you guys want to hang around to after the meeting, I'm gonna bring that up. What we brought up at the CRA yesterday, I think it's important that the planning department hear it and we all walk, work into a, work together.
All right, what's before us, though, is, is not the design of the building, but you clearly see where we're coming from. You've got seventy-five feet, you're not utilizing it. You could certainly take another ten or fifteen feet of a really nice underground parking space and just have a few more cars outside to meet your parking. Lot of thi, lot of ways that could be done. The swimming pool could be put up on the roof.
But it almost, it doesn't really need to, it could be, but it doesn't need to, there's really a lot of...
The fact is, when you've got that kind of height, you can afford to do that. And, you know, you might want to look at those things because what you want is a facility that's gonna grow in value, not shrink. And, you know, don't take offense at my calling this a tacky building at the outright, but the truth is, it's just another cookie cutter project. It's not going to win an architectural award the way it's presented. It meets the rules, there's no basis for denial. But i, i, in terms of where we're gonna be in twenty years, these units are not gonna grow in value. And we would recommend that you seriously reconsider this, so this project has long-term value. Having said that, the chair will call for a motion. Yep, go ahead.
After it goes through the review process, would it ever come back to us again?
It will go to the development review committee process.
That's it?
At that point, it's internalized.
Yep, it's internalized.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. James, and then let's move this.
Yes, just a quick clarification on the approval conditions. I see a couple of lines about lead certification. It's my underst, the way that I'm interpreting it, it doesn't seem to me that they actually have to obtain lead certification. They just have to apply for it. Is that...
No, actually, the LDRs, actually, for new development require lead certification of some sort, whether it's silver or gold. Or either from the US Council or the Florida Coalition, from one of the certifying agencies. It does require new development to be, to be green, yes, to be a green development.
Yeah, that was one thing we got done in the last round of LDR.
Yes, exactly.
It is a matter of applying for it, you must meet the criteria.
Okay.
Right, so that is a requirement. It's, it's not an automatic, and not only that, they're also seeking bonus points. So they, they're compelled to do that as well for the extra bonus.
They don't get their bonus units if they don't do that.
And they won't get CO until they prove that they have seen...
Yeah, and that, that's part of the conditional use permit language, yes, that's a requirement, that they, they be certified before it's fully approved, fully.
All right.
Kevin, I just, Mr. Chair, let me...
Last item, and let's move this.
Where, where, what's the height on this now, forty feet? What are we at? What's our height right now, what, on, on this current project? You're four, you look like you're four, you're four stories.
Thirty-nine feet, two inches, according to the plan submitted.
Thirty-nine feet, two inches.
You can go up to seventy-five.
So we, we can go another thirty-five feet there, easy?
I'd so love to see a beautiful building and have Biscayne Parking over here and complain about it.
How much, how much more is that gonna add to the cost? And could you get more units by going another thirty-five feet? And how much would you need to put in the parking? And, 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 I mean, and it, it is marketable. It's, and I, you know, I, I, this, this, you know, I, I, I don't mean to be redon, but let's just think outside the box. Let's think a little bit of glamour. I, I, I see beautiful buildings going up today with a rooftop landscaping, pool on the roof or what have you, the same thing here.
May I share an observation? If, if we push to sort of increase this particular project and if it was not sort of elevating the standard, we're just getting more of what we don't want. We really need first off to make this a, a better project somehow before we push it to be more of it. Because that's what we've been doing all along, we've been getting more and more and more of this sort of, not in this project, but in general, mediocrity amongst North Miami, and we need to up the ante there. May I make a...
Would you like to discuss this with your client and come back to us, could we continue this?
May I make a motion to the table? Can we, since we won't get a review, are we, is it possible for us to table this for one meeting? Have it come back to us? Because otherwise, it's out of our hands, there's no influence. And this would allow, you know, we are obviously very welcome to, to approve something that has a, a better bias to it. It would be one meeting, which is not much, having, having waited two years myself on various meetings, would not be much. We could hear it right away, and I think it would be well accepted. And a lot of the improvements, all of the suggestions made could be incorporated by that time.
I, I, I think that's a good idea. I think the building need to have more creativity into it. There are things that can be done to improve this building. The possibilities are definitely there. It's time that we start bringing more creativity in this city. I, I certainly encourage you to talk to your client to see what can be done differently.
Are we allowed to move?
I, I, you know, that, that would be something that I think would require the applicant. I'm not sure what their timeline is, what their financing structure happens to be. We may end up walking into a lawsuit. The project right now qualifies for approval. It falls within the confines of the code, the LDRs. It qualifies under, it satisfies, satisfies the height requirement under four dash two oh three. It satisfies the open space requirement under four dash two oh three. The residential bonus under four dash two oh four. The CUP requirements under three dash four oh five. I urge this board to then seek their approval for such, there's no basis for this board to say let's table it. Because they fully qualify.
I think, I think all of us...
They, they just discussed, is there a possibility that you might have something in mind for us?
Well, he has to be under oath.
Absolutely, sir, but I would have to put you under oath. If you please, if you can step up to the, right here, you can use this mic, thank you. Sir, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, sir, you may proceed. Name and address first, please, for the record.
My name is Dr. George Sen, I'm the president of...
Please, make sure that the light is, is turned on, green. Is it, is it green if you press a button?
Perhaps you might want to move over to the next one if that one doesn't work.
It's working? Okay.
My name is George Sen, I'm president of San Consulting Group, the architecture and engineering firm for this project. I respectfully, all the opinion they express by the councilmen. However, you have to realize, this location is not brick, okay? This location cannot command one thousand dollar square feet of the property. This location cannot command one thousand dollar square feet of the property. So therefore, the, the owner also have to balance the value of the, of the, of the final product versus his investment. We can make this such a, a beautiful project, but at the end, he cannot get his investment back, and there's so no project, okay? So, reality had to set in with where we are. We'd like to see beautiful design, beautiful buildings, but the reality doesn't allow that. Please, gentlemen, we would take your suggestion into consideration, we would take a look again, unless we can improve, we will. But we are respectfully request your approval, if we are in violation of the request, then so be it, okay? If not, please, let us have this permission to go ahead and to develop that land, and we would take your comment into consideration, we would discuss with the owner. However, we are limited with the location, what we can do. We talk about enclosed parking garage, uh, I'd like to see everything which you suggest, totally agree with you. But again, reality is where we are.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve.
I'll, I'll, I'll second the motion.
Set motion made by?
Jason.
Jason James, thank you, seconded by?
Cast- caster.
Dean Castor, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carried, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, please do give it considerations.
We start in a way, and I will discuss with, uh, with the developer, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's not a big deal by itself, and maybe you could do some nice things.
Sir, this item will be scheduled to go before the, uh, city council, the mayor and city council on October twenty-eighth.
Yeah, we did.
For final approval, thank you.
For, for knowing that it passed, knowing that it passed, I, I want to.
Let's, let the record reflect that Mr. Prevettal did vote against that.
Knowing that it was going to pass anyway.
So it's, uh.
To show our concern.
So we had a five to one on that, all right. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, we wish you best of luck with your project.
You're welcome.
Best of luck.
All right, let's go on to PC twelve dash fourteen. An ordinance of the vice mayor as acting mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, amending chapter twenty-nine of the North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations by amending Article Four, Division Three entitled Non-Residential Districts. Specifically, Section Four dash three zero two entitled Uses permitted to Establish Liquor Package Stores in the C-one Commercial Zoning District to Encourage the Retention, Attraction, and Expansion of Business and Industry Consistent with the Intent of the North Miami Comprehensive Plan, Providing for Repeal, Providing for Conflict, Providing for Severability, Providing for Codification, and for an Effective Date. Staff report, please.
Staff has a recommendation and requests that the planning commission approve the proposed ordinance to amend Article Four, Section Four dash three oh two of the city's land development regulation, LDR, to establish liquor package stores as a special exception use in the C-one Commercial Zoning District. Uh, if staff would like to proceed with some background information and an overview. Uh, the, the, this text amendment is as, has been, uh, uh, this application has been made to amend the said section, Article Four, Section Four dash three oh two entitled Uses permitted. This allows liquor package stores as a special exception in the C-one zoning district. Originally, what, uh, the, historically, the liquor package stores were allowed as a special exception use in the commercial and industrial districts. But in two thousand and nine, the use was excluded in the newly adopted LDRs. And as such, the amendment seeks to establish the use as a special exception in the C-one commercial district, so that the, the distribution of this, this liquor package store use is distributed equitably throughout, throughout the city. Right now, you can see that if you, if you look at the map that is provided at the back of the staff report, there is a map with, uh, an aerial picture, and that shows the two existing liquor package stores that are sort of very close to each other along Biscayne Boulevard.
Staff, for the record, is that Crown and Walgreens, Crown Liquors and Walgreens, do we know which ones?
Crown's moved, Crown's gone.
Which, which two, because I, I only know of.
Uh, Crown moved down the street, didn't they?
Yeah, that's right, they moved to, uh.
They just moved a little higher up.
They moved to.
Yeah.
They moved to North Miami Beach.
Yeah, so, so is that, is that the one that you're counting, because I only know of, of Walgreens and of Crown's.
Well, uh, the way.
Oh, no, Big Daddy's.
Is that what it's?
Yeah, Big Daddy's is.
Yeah, the, these were identified through the, um.
No, but I think there's a package store in front, okay.
These were identified through the business tax receipt information from the city clerk's office.
Say, say again?
These were identified through the business tax receipt information obtained from the city clerk's office.
It is Big Daddy's.
Yeah, Big Daddy's is further north than, uh, twenty-five fifty-five.
Yeah, it's on one twenty-five fifty-five.
Way, yeah, it's, it's further north, I, I walked every morning, I don't know, it's.
Yeah, it's one thirty-three roughly.
It's, it's further north, that isn't, uh, I think that one twenty-five fifty-five would be, ha- would have been Crown Liquor.
Right.
Okay, which is now not there, that's, that's, that's north now, it's up in North Miami Beach, that became a, uh, dental office or a medical, some kind of a medical clinic.
That could be, because this is based on business tax receipts, which is only, um, they're renewable once a year. So if they moved, you know, within that period of time, then it won't, it won't, they're still being reflected as an active business.
So this is not really active.
And what is it, one twenty-two ninety-five, does anybody know?
Uh.
It's Walgreens.
Walgreens?
It's a Walgreens liquor store on the corner, yes.
No, no, that, that's twenty-two. Because, because.
Oh, yes, of course, because that's the main street.
That's a hundred and twenty-third, that's actually, that number, Ken, that's.
Yeah, that would be Wal- yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
That, that is Walgreens, yeah.
So we've got Walgreens and showing Big Daddy's actually, which is rather a surprise, they've been there for years and years selling packaged liquor.
Uh, it's, this, this data was provided by, through the business tax receipts, as, as we mentioned earlier, and whatever is active on the city clerk's, uh, list is what was provided to staff.
Staff, maybe you should contact somebody and, and check and see if Big Daddy's is remiss in not renewing a city permit. Because Big Daddy's has been there for about twenty years, does anybody know?
No, geez, over forty.
Over forty?
Oh, god, yeah.
Uh, long, long time.
Long time.
That package store's been there, oh my gosh.
And I'm sure you've gone to Big Daddy's for dinner, and you, if you haven't, you, you're remiss in not eating in the city, and you obviously have seen the packaged liquor store right in the front, they didn't hide it in the back, it's right out front.
Staff, staff will review, uh, that again with the clerk's office, we will do that, yes.
Yes, they need to go and look at that, see if there isn't something that we have overlooked, okay? Now, having said that, we digress, go ahead with your report.
That's okay, that's okay, so as, as, um, to continue, um, uh, this, this proposed amendment will allow these liquor package stores, uh, along, um, northwest Seventh Avenue and Dixie Highway, and, uh, one more, uh, place, uh, the, where it's towards the north of the prop- north of the city, right here, where the, you have C-ones, uh, as special exceptions, and what will happen is that as they are special exception, they will go to the Board of Adjustment, um, not just because it's special exception, but because the current code states that liquor stores cannot be, the distance requirement for liquor stores or packaged liquor stores has to be fifteen hundred feet away from churches or houses of worship, schools and residences. And if you were to look at the zoning map, along those C-ones, that is not even a possib- remote possibility. It, it, it violates that even right now, therefore, they have to go for a variance to the Board of Adjustment. So, um, that, that is basically, uh, what, uh, the amendment will do. If this amendment is approved, then the staff will be, uh, doing a, um, subsequent, a chapter three amendment to include a twenty-five hundred distance requirement for liquor, between a liquor package store and another liquor package store, between two, two liquor package stores.
How many, how many?
Twenty, twenty-five hundred. Yeah.
May I ask, wh- why exactly would that matter? I mean, we have gas stations next to gas stations, and taking the, taking the politics out of it, whether you should have.
You don't want proliferation of the same businesses.
No, well, but we do have that elsewhere, why, why would it be for this?
If I'm, I'm mistaken, then we just do, uh, uh, pass an ordinance on, uh.
This means more competition.
Taxes, the tax, uh, the self taxing places and.
And barber, barber shops.
There's only so many allowed.
Well, that's a quantity, that's not next to each, you know, whether they're next to each other or not, and, and quite typically.
Well, it's the same.
It was a fifteen hundred foot requirement.
Well, I think we're just cutting down on the overall number.
Yeah, it's basically so that they don't congregate in one area, so if you approve tonight, if you approve this, this proposed ordinance, to allow the liquor package stores to exist in the C-one, it will come with also a distancing requirement, so you don't have a migration of nothing but packaged liquor stores within, you know, a three block area, or, or something similar. So as to prevent, uh, what was going on here in the major business corridor for hair salons and, you know, and those kind of, kinds of businesses that sort of like just literally took over one area.
So I have a concern, I have a question. Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, go ahead, Dean.
So if, if we approve this here, what about those who may come forward for similar, um, situation, similar approval in the near future? Wouldn't that become an issue?
Uh, you mean for, if you approve this, it will be an issue, they will have to go to the Board of Adjustment for a special exception, and if, if it deemed, if it is deemed to be necessary, they will also have to get, seek a variance for the distancing requirement, and that would have to go through the Board of Adjustment, and both of which are quasi-juridicial proceedings. So the applicant has the burden of showing that, uh, they're entitled to the variance and the special exception.
Okay, 'cause I don't think we want.
Uh, I'm gonna chime in on this for a minute, and then I'll let each of you think this through and, and say what you're gonna say. I, I recall the major controversy over the Walgreens that we built, uh, on northeast Sixth. The, uh, they wanted a packaged liquor store as part of that, and there was a tremendous amount of grassroots opposition to doing that. And eventually, the only way they were allowed to build their Walgreens was if they dropped the liquor store. Now, when I look at northwest Seventh Avenue, you've got Saint James Catholic Church and schools sitting there on a hundred and thirty-first, and we have the Trinity Church and school at a hundred and twenty-fifth. We have a number of storefront churches scattered around the business district there. And I'm not sure I have a lot of confidence in the Board of Adjustment to toe the line on this. I, I don't really see where we would get packaged stores unless you went above a hundred and thirty-fifth street. And to be completely candid, a pro- proliferation of liquor stores does not bring about a better quality of life. We already have Total Wine and Beverage, which is a phenomenal liquor store. We have Big Daddy's, Crown just moved technically in the North Miami Beach, but come on, it's just a couple of blocks further up the road. And we have, uh, Costco, and, uh, I, you've got Walgreens at a hundred and twenty-third in the Boulevard. And I, I don't know how many more liquor establishments we would need. Each of you is gonna draw your own conclusion, I don't see a hue and cry clamoring for liquor stores all over the city. Uh, I'm just, I look dimly on this one, but having said that, I'm not here to prejudice any of you and your thoughts. And I know it's gonna be a majority vote, I, I can't really see this, but I will listen to each of you.
May I ask a, a question in response to the, the listing of current liquor stores or liquor sales? Are any of those mentioned more than one block west of Biscayne Boulevard? Anyone? Matter of fact, I, except for Total, I think almost every.
No, they're really all along a hundred, the, the Biscayne corridor, they're all along.
So, but we, we have a city meanwhile that's, you know, there are a fair amount of citizens that are pretty far west. Now, if, if this was something where people are going to alcohol, they're opening up, they're going crazy, they're drunk driving back and such, yes, that would be a concern. But I think people, if they are, uh, consuming these or purchasing these products and going to that location, uh, again, I don't think they are opening up and driving back drunk right away, but just a matter of convenience, of taking cars off the street, of giving a little bit more life to, uh, the western corridors, which we're trying to do with our downtown development committee and such, uh, why would we insist on all this stuff being so pressed up against and right onto Biscayne Boulevard? In addition to that, uh, there is a competition, uh, element i- in our regulations. Uh, do we not allow a restaurant next to a restaurant, next to a restaurant, next to a restaurant, all of them selling alcohol? We probably do, and, uh, so you can get it that way, and of course, if it came before us, we would have a Publix selling wine next to a Costco selling wine, everybody else, and if we could line them all up, we would approve that, and we would do that.
That's right, we forgot the Publix selling a wine in all their stores, yeah, so we have that too, so I, I'll, I'll, I'll be, let me answer it this way, Bill. I, as you know, I live.
And they are to the west, actually, there's another Publix to the west.
About as far west as any of us, I think, uh, Jason, you're the only one that's a little further beyond me. And we have people on the west side who, uh, regardless of the hour of the day, put their can of beer in a bag and walk up and down the street, and I, I look at this as a quality of life issue, and I'm thinking, we do not need to put liquor stores up and down northwest Seventh Avenue, we just don't need it, however.
Don't, don't they get beer right now from regular convenience stores and the supermarkets?
Probably they do, which means you've already got that, why add to it?
If I may interject, um, the, this is limited to three PS licenses, meaning package store, and it's, um, and entitles them to, unlike Publix, it entitles them to sell liquor. Having said that, there is no consumption in or out of the premises allowed. It is a misdemeanor, the first offense, a felony, the second offense. So if anyone, they are not allowed to sell an open container, they're not allowed to allow consumption at or about the premises. These are the ki- this, this is, this is a three PS license, look at, again, it's the example was given, Total Liquors and Wines. That's the kind of, of establishment that we're talking about here today, three PS licenses, we're not talking about, um, a, a garage station that may sell beer.
Yes, but once you buy it and you walk out the door, you can do any blooming thing you wanna do with it, you see?
But, but that is a crime committed by the consumer and not by the establishment.
Exactly right, I acknowledge it's a crime committed by the consumer, and we don't have enough police
And that would be illegal anywhere in the city.
in this city now to do the inadequate job based on our population, and I can't see why we would consider burdening them with another quality of life issue to be enforced.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I?
But that's, again, that, that's my feeling, and yes, uh.
I'm in agreement with you.
What was the other?
I'll let you go first.
Thank you, what was, what was the reason, why do we, what, who, why are we wanna change this now, what happened?
Well, I think as Commissioner Prevettal indicated, it's, right now, it's only one area of the city that, that permits this because of the zoning structure.
What was the hue and cry, uh, who, somebody brought this forward, or, or, what, what's the reason for changing it, other than? We know it's, is this recommended by staff, or that, uh, some proprietor come forward, or somebody wanna open up a liquor store and they can't? What was, what's, what's behind this, what set this off?
Well, I don't, you know, I can't answer that, I mean, I'm not sure what is, I get my assignment and I work on it, but.
Staff, you can, I believe, right? Somebody obviously brought this before you, could you tell us who that is, please?
Well, according to the, uh, the, this resolu- uh, this ordinance, it has been sponsored by, uh, through the, uh, city attorney's office and sponsored by, uh, vice mayor acting as mayor, that's what I know from.
But I don't know where, where, you know, that originated from, it's sponsored by the, the, the acting mayor, but I don't, you know, beyond.
So what happens? He's responding to some measure of his constituency, that doesn't mean we have to agree to that.
Right, so what happened if we should deny this motion?
Well, it'll go to city council for final approval.
And they can do what they do anyway, regardless of what we did, so.
Yeah, and, and historically, it was allowed in the C-one, it came, for some reason, it came out, it came out of the C-one, for some reason, because it's allowed in the other.
It came out in two thousand and nine, I'm trying to remember why that was, why it was left out.
It came out because of an intense opposition from elements of the community that felt we already had enough liquor sales in the city and were concerned about the negative impact it would have. and were concerned about the negative impact it would have on quality of life. And as I look at the city, it is, and I look up and down my avenue, when I look up and down Seventh Avenue, I'm thinking, you know, there was a lot of wisdom in that decision. And I, I just don't, I'm sorry, I, I don't see the need for packaged liquor stores when you've already got beer sales at the corner gas stations and you've already got Publix selling beer and wine, and they all do, and we've got, uh, Big Daddy's and you've got Walgreens over on the Boulevard, you've got Total Wine that sells everything under the sun, and you've got Costco. I, I just don't see the, the need for it. And I'm looking at an empty hall here tonight. I don't see a hundred residents clamoring. Uh, well, all right, I've got one there. We have one.
Let's hear, let's, let's, let her speak.
You wanna come on down and talk to us? Let's open the public hearing. Come on down, give us your opinion, tell us your name and where you live.
Good evening, planning board. My name is Jessica Alston. I live eleven forty Northwest One Twenty-Fifth Street in Sunkist Grove. I'm Vice President of the Sunkist Grove Neighborhood Association. Uh, on this issue of having a packaged liquor store, uh, liquor, uh, facilities, we are opposed to it. Uh, earlier this year, we, there was a hearing held regarding having the store that's across from, um, Grace Funeral Home, who wanted to sell packaged liquors, even though it is outside of the boundaries of the city of North Miami. We together gathered, uh, over fifty signatures of our residents in Sunkist Grove and presented it at the hearing that they had regarding this issue. And they, um, declined the proposal for the, uh, the, uh, the grocery store to be able to sell packaged liquors. And this was outside of the boundaries of the city of North Miami. As you know, a large part of the Seventh Avenue is in the boundaries of Sunkist Grove. And we stand, we stand diametrically opposed, diametrically opposed to the.
Proposal ordinance.
Proposal here. As the community, we stand diametrically opposed to the proposal.
Question, please?
Thank you.
Yeah, quick. Uh, do you yourself, uh, participate in alcohol? Do you drink alcoholic beverages?
Do I drink alcoholic beverages? Uh, I don't see where that's an issue, but I choose not to.
Okay, 'cause there are, there are, I'm guessing there are many people who do. It's, it's not illegal, at least since the end of prohibition. And, uh, you know, I, I, I wonder, and this committee has, has approved of many, many, many car dealerships. And we have car dealerships up and down Biscayne and all this. And unless you can point out in the last, whatever, ten years or so, that these establishments that have granted, have, have sold, whether it's Publix or Big Daddy or Total Wine, that they are directly related to someone purchasing something, taking it in the car, all of a sudden drinking it and all of a sudden driving crazy down the road and creating some sort of problem, I don't think that's happened at all. I think for the most part, uh, they've been pretty responsible. If they're not gonna get it at one location, I don't think that's gonna stop them because it's not in that location. They're just gonna have to now drive a longer distance to get to the Biscayne corridor to make it more congested, uh, where they're, on Biscayne, there's competition. But if they went to the West Dixie Corridor or someplace else further west, we've raised, set up these parameters, and staff has set up these parameters, that they're rather far from religious establishments, from academic establishments, from so on and so on residences. I mean, we're, we're gonna have like a, a few very rare pockets that they could even provide these three locations.
Yes, but unfortunately, all they have to do is go to the Board of Adjustment and get an instant variance.
Mr. Chairman, I.
That's a rough one, going to the Board of Adjustment.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it can be.
Sir, I also serve on the Board of Adjustment, so I.
Well, all right, thank you very much for your testimony.
We ask for support in, in, in supporting the quality, maintain the quality of life that we are trying to encourage in our community, for our children and our residents. Thank you.
What's, what's your name again, man? What's your name?
My name is Jessica Alston. I'm a resident of Sunkist Grove.
Yes, as incidentally as am I, we've met at the last meeting.
Yes, I didn't know who you were.
See, isn't that amazing? Yes, I put on my bow tie. You don't recognize me.
I recognize your voice.
I, I think you probably know Jason James.
Jason James as well, as well. And I, I, oh, I swear to tell the truth. I swear that what I'm saying is true.
Oh, yes.
That it actually did happen. We did win a hearing against having the liquor store at the borderline on one nineteen, right across from Grace. We already won that ballot. It wasn't even, even in the boundary of the city of North Miami. So to have it won in the city of North Miami, when we had already won it, not being at an adjacent, uh, adjacent area. We, we just ask for your support, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Yes.
I, I am in total agreement with you, uh, as far as be- better quality of life. As Jessica, who was a resident in the area, obviously she knows best. She's been fighting for that. Uh, I myself have, um, driven down the area and have seen, you know, folks with beer and, and stuff like that. So I'm definitely, if I have to make an approval, I would deny the motion personally.
It's weird you get anywhere though.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, and all due respect, Bill, um, by the way, um, I'm, I'm opposed to this and I'm going home and having some wine for dinner, by the way. So it's not on, on, on any moral grounds that I look at this. I'm looking at it as pure fact that we wanna, we wanna improve the, the, um, the environment of what Seventh Avenue is now. Adding liquor stores to it is, is not the answer. And, and like Kevin has pointed out, this goes to the Board of Variances. We, we just don't know which way the, the wind would blow in that direction and, and you can very well get proliferation. But, but it's obvious that the citizens on that side of, of the city don't want it. And I, I would hope that they, they fight it. If, if council passes this and we reject it, uh, I would hope that those fifty people or more would show up and, and voice their opinion on this and, and let, let the city fathers know that it's not a good idea. And the, and the other issue is, um, uh, I, I just have a, a problem that the fact that it wasn't, it wasn't a factor until someone obviously approached one of our, our council members and has requested that, um, this item be brought before us to make a decision on. And, and, uh, I, I feel that they politicized it right there and you know how I feel about items that come to us that have been politicized. So that pretty, pretty much, uh, convinced me, uh, to, to oppose this item.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion to deny?
Um, I haven't heard really from Kenny on this one yet.
I can assure you that I.
I don't wanna leave you out of this.
I, I don't, I don't get thirsty. I, uh, I go to Total Wines and I do go to Costco. I can remember, um, when I started in the Police Department in nineteen seventy, public intoxication was a misdemeanor and people would be arrested for it. I thought it was kinda over the top when you could just simply take a person home for imbibbing too much. And then along came, I believe, the Myers Act where we didn't incarcerate people and make them into criminals for, for drinking. I don't like to see a proliferation of liquor stores, but then again, that's just my opinion. We do have the right as citizens, as constituents, to approach our elected officials. This is the whole body politics. This is why we have a government of the people, by the people, for the people, to approach our, our elected officials and say, hey, listen, we would like to have liquor stores in this area. This is, I approach my councilman when I wanna see things changed in my neighborhood and he's the elected official that would bring it forward and to try to improve the quality of life. Personally, I could go either way with this. I, I don't really have any personal objections to it. Although I don't think that I would wanna walk down on a hundred and twenty-third Street, Northeast Sixteenth Avenue and see a liquor store and, uh, and the little bottles being sold and they got outside the store and they start consuming them and throwing them around. And because I, I see the beer cans out there. I see the trash out on the street. I walk every day. And I guess I can go either way with this. You know, if Whole, not Whole, well, Whole Foods, but if, uh, Total Wines was moving into North Miami and they wanted to go to Northwest Seventh Avenue and open up a large shop like that with the wines and the spirits, I, I would have no objection to that. Uh, I, I guess what we're visualizing in our minds is a little tiny store. I don't know what time the hours would be of closing and how would it be regulated? How would we regulate that with our licenses procedure? When would they close? When would they open? Uh, are they gonna be open at four o'clock in the morning and everybody from around the adjoining neighborhoods is gonna come up and get a bottle of rye or a bottle of vodka and consume it and throw it on the ground? That is a major, major concern. You know, especially on Seventh Avenue. I can remember the homeless sleeping on the I ninety-five and a hundred and thirty-first Street by Saint James Church and I found it absolutely deplorable and I got the DOT and got them out of there. Uh, we have a number of low-end hotels over there and, uh, I would really, you know, at this point in the game, and to that area improved, I, I would just say, hey, this is, you know, I'm, I'm not that great, I'm not that crazy about this ordinance.
I think, I think, aren't we all imagining that this is gonna be a, a new liquor store, like a really shoddy liquor store that opens up next to, uh, a small apartment building on the corner and across the street is that and everybody's gonna be there with their kids, whatever, and it's a really a, a low-grade sort of vision of what this would be? Uh, I think we're, uh, walking, uh, some thin ice. And we're assuming that the people in a particular neighborhood are not gonna be responsible. And I, I do wanna guard all the people, but is, doesn't this have the provision for being such a distance from residential occupancy? We're not talking about, didn't we cover that? That it is, it can't be across the street from a, an apartment complex?
It's, as it stands right now, all package stores have to be fifteen-hundred feet away from a similar use, meaning a, a packaged liquor store, another packaged liquor store. A house of worship, okay, a park or school. So that is currently right now, one thousand five hundred feet away from, from those uses.
Did we have something residential?
What's being proposed is if this passes, uh, then it's going to be increased to twenty-two thousand five hundred for similar uses, meaning that no two package stores can open, um, within two, two thousand five hundred feet of each other. So that's someone in, in, in the commission setting, it's like a quarter of a mile or something.
With each other, wouldn't it?
Well, they're.
They're not quite twenty-five hundred feet apart.
But Costco's in North Miami Beach.
Right. You can't, they regulate, they can actually, you know. You know, so, so, yeah, that, that's why, because we can't tell a, a licensee in another jurisdiction where to open.
I, I just don't see the need for this, but gentlemen.
What would be the hours, Kevin, what would be the hours, what would be the hours of operation on something like this?
Well, it's already, it's already, it would be the same hours that all the other ones are allowed to operate.
And what, what is that? Refresh me, please.
The hours of operation?
On a package store, not on a bar, but on a package store.
Sure, let me get that for you.
And that can also be a, a subject of avar- a variance also, correct? The hours?
That, that would be, uh, subject of a variance. Usually, that is only modified by City Council approval and it's usually tied to a special event.
You know, my feeling is, is if Total Wine came in and wanted to put a nice big store on the west side, I'd be happy to consider this in light of, of Total Wine with restrictions for their use and benefit. But that's not the case here. That's not what's being asked. And I, I don't see this because, you know, uh.
And then, let's not forget, we have a resident.
I'm sorry, I, I, you, you're not gonna convince me.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, also, let's not forget, we have a resident here. Okay, that's opposing this issue and I think we must.
Yes, the residents are opposed to it.
We must respect that. If they don't want it, they don't want it. It's not about us.
One resident.
Well, she represent.
The association.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I just have a quick question, um, actually a couple. Is, the way that. Sorry. Is, if, uh, is the way that the, the LDRs are written right now, would, are there any inconsistencies right now? The way, just the way it's written right now?
Right now, chapter three is specific to alcoholic beverages and that is where the, uh, standards and the requirements and then, and the restrictions reside in the Code of Ordinances. So this amend, text amendment pertains to chapter three, alcoholic beverages. And it has all, uh, the stated information there.
Chapter three regulates the sale, consumption of alcoholic beverages in the city of North Miami. The, the, the code section that you're being asked to, to consider, to modify, is to allow that particular use in the C one.
In C one, so that's my follow-up question then, is, if it was, what, what other zoning districts will allow the packaged liquor with this, with this special exception?
C two B E.
Currently, the code allows liquor package stores in C two B E and C two B W.
But not in C one.
Right.
So they're still allowed to work, I guess it's just based on the way that our zoning map is.
They're not barred from the city. They have zones where they could be set.
Correct. It's just right now, they're just not very, not very many.
But they still have to, they still have to, uh, maintain the fifteen-hundred foot radius of, away from churches, houses of worship, residences and schools. If I may, with the board's permission, just read into the record, the liquor package store definition. That might clarify some questions.
No, I think we're pretty, pretty clear on what a package store is in a bar. And I don't think that's the issue. The issue is. I just think our, our main concern is, is that we're taking, we, we wanna allow it in a zoning area that doesn't allow it right now. And there's no wording to that aspect or, or somehow, and it was taken out because of residential concerns. And now we're, we're basically, we're, we're going to turn around and say, forget what we said in two thousand and nine. We're gonna now allow it as a special exception in, in two thousand fourteen for, for a commercial, for C one. And, and I think that's the issue and that's what we're all here hammering out and we, we, we appear to disagree in some, some areas of that. So, no, it's not, we're well aware of the definition.
All right, Gene, you did put a motion on the floor.
I just get clarification.
Yeah, I'll let you, I'll let you ask it. You've got a motion on the floor.
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll get a second on the motion. If anybody wants a second, state your motion.
I'd like to see this motion be denied, especially because the resident who's representing, um, uh, Sunki- Sunkist, I believe, Sunkist Grove, is opposing that. They don't want it. And I myself would like to see a, uh, better quality of, um, you know, human beings in the area. And I don't think, as you said, Mr. Chair, having the packaged liquor store is not gonna help in that area, right now at least.
All right, we've got a motion made. We'll need a second and then we'll allow the discussion.
I'll second the motion based on, uh, the community opposition. Um, and also, to be honest, I think this map is not correct. So I hate to say it, but it's, this isn't representing of what's really out there. 'Cause I know for sure on Seventh Ave, there's a liquor store. On Seventh and One. One thirty, maybe, you know, like one twenty, one twenty-first, right next to the, there's, it's right next to Church of Chicken. There, that's a liquor store there. It's right, it's right near Church of Chicken, right next to a church. It used to be an Autozone, that's now a church. That's not.
Church of Autozone?
You know what? That might not be within the city limits.
I say because, um, the state requires a zoning approval by the city before they issue the license. So I'm thinking, how did they manage that?
Then I retract that. I apologize.
Okay.
But Church of Chicken is in the city.
Maybe it's one of those donut hole.
Well, there aren't any donuts there.
No, that's not Church, that's, uh, that's Popeyes. Yes. I misspoke on, uh, so I, then I, but I still stand by my initial statement.
The motion.
I am seconding the motion based on community opposition.
Motion made and seconded. All right, now, Mr. Prevotell.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry that I'm still unclear. Initially, when we were discussing it, I thought there was a restriction from residential, um, uh, occupancies to have these liquor stores separated. As you've read it through the second time or third time, it seems, I know it's houses of worship and so on. Is there a restriction from the proposed use, uh, in respect to residential occupancy? Or can it be right next to it, right up against the residential? There's a distance, right?
There's a distance requirement existing, uh, right now, that any new package store would have to adhere to, and that is fifteen hundred feet away from any residential zoning district.
Okay, I'll also call on staff. About how far, for, for our, our general information, fifteen hundred feet would it be? Uh, is, is that a half a block, a multiple of blocks? What would you estimate fifteen hundred feet to be?
So, yes.
I, I, I think it's like three blocks.
Are, are blocks normally, the north-south blocks more like two hundred to three hundred feet? So we're talking about five blocks?
It's like three blocks.
Well, it'd be the east-west line, too.
Fifty-two hundred feet is a mile.
Think of how, the frontage of a block, a block is, like, a, a New York block is generally, uh, two hundred feet. And I think it's just about the same here. You have like two houses of about a hundred feet of frontage and a hundred feet of frontage occupying the corner. So we're talking really probably about five blocks, I'm guessing, at least four blocks, in most cases. So to keep that in mind, that it's not where we're having this next to or on top of a residential complex, or even a, a bigger house.
But I beg to differ with you, Bill. Most of the houses along the west side of Seventh Avenue, that whole neighborhood, there's homes right along all those,
Well, they wouldn't be allowed, then.
On, on the back alley of those buildings.
Then they wouldn't be allowed, then they wouldn't be allowed.
But, but then again, again, they could get a variance, and that's what we're talking about here. It could be, it could become a, a variance. If we allow it as a special exception, it could get a, a variance.
That's what we don't want.
And that's what we do know.
That's what I, I think the majority of, uh, or, or some of us on the panel feel that we're opening the door for that to be given a variance if it's granted a special exception. Remember, they're asking for it to become a special exception.
With that, is there a way to limit the hours? Night to, uh, uh, in, in the ordinance?
Well, right now-
A liquor store is allowed to open up till what time? Bar is allowed to open up till what time?
Between the hours of one thirty a.m. and seven a.m. are, is closed. They're supposed to be closed within that, so they're open till one, one thirty a.m.
Right now, are, are the bars allowed to open at one thirty?
Exactly, this, this goes for, that's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. And then, uh, it changes for Saturday and Sunday. It's, uh, you're allowed to stay open till two thirty in the morning for Saturday and Sunday.
That's, that's not a really good thing, you come from the clubs and then you-
Let's call the question.
You'll start buying liquors.
That's, that's under chap, you know, that's the existing code.
Exactly.
All right, we, we have a, we have a, a motion made and seconded in opposition to this. We're looking at, uh, this going down one way or the other, let's call the vote. In favor of the motion to deny?
Aye.
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 All right, four down, Kenny?
No.
All right, and?
Bill? Again, just to show that I think it's in question, I'll, I'll go in favor of, uh, of the staff recommendation.
All right, so it's four to two. Denied, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Mrs. Alston?
Yes.
Let me be clear about something. We, as planning commissioners, do not attend city council meetings. If you wish, well, most of us don't, but again, Bill Prebertell is the exception, he goes, rest of us do not.
I go sometimes.
Now.
And Kenny?
Uh, well, I'd, let me retract that and say the chair does not attend council meetings.
You guys are sometimes there.
Now, if you want the west side, the Sunkist Grove Homeowners Association to have a meaningful presence, you're going to need to get Judy, the officers and members to attend the council meeting. And, uh, this goes before the council on what date? Staff, somebody?
On the twenty-eighth, October twenty-eighth.
October twenty-eighth. So-
Unless it's pulled from the agenda, but it's, it should be scheduled for October twenty-eighth.
So you've gotta check the council agenda to see if it's gonna be there, and then you've gotta get a, a group of people ready to hoop and holler. Uh, the challenge has been delivered, thank you, Mrs. Alston. We closed the public hearing, we've dealt with this. Now, staff, concerning our meeting in November, the fourth is election night, the eleventh is veterans, it is the desire of the chair that the planning commission not meet in November, as it would otherwise require a special meeting that would require additional costs to be incurred to the city, something we really don't need. Anything that anybody wants to do in November can easily roll over to the first Tuesday in December.
All right.
All right, any commission have an objection to that?
Nope.
No, sir.
Harry, none, we have no meeting in November.
Ken?
Yes.
Thank you.
One, uh, one thing I'd like to bring up, Mr. Chair.
Yes, you may, and then I'll get to you, Bill.
Yesterday, we had a, um, CRA advisory meeting, and, uh, Mr. Prebertell was there, also talking about downtown redevelopment. I don't mean to be redundant, but we talked about downtown redevelopment, the planning commission, and the, uh, CRA advisory and CRA board itself, you know, coordinating. And one of the things that was brought up again yesterday was, one of the members brought up the fact that we're in a development cycle right now, real estate development cycle, and I don't know how long it's gonna go on, for another three years, three years. We missed the last one, we changed our land use. Now, I, I wanna direct this question to, to staff and to council. When is our land use, or, what, what?
When is our land use ordinance? When is that due to be reviewed? What, what year, what date?
Next, uh, this year.
This year.
Two thousand fourteen, fifteen.
Two thousand fourteen, and if we-
Fourteen, fifteen, so really, it's gonna be twenty fifteen before we get to it.
That is correct, because, uh-
Okay, twenty, twenty fifteen, and what month of twenty fifteen?
By, it has to be transmitted by September two thousand fifteen.
Okay, so we're looking at-
So we've got nine months next year to, to hash it all out again.
Okay, well, my, this is my, my, is there a possibility that we can look at that ordinance before that? We're, we're, we're starting to move downtown.
No, I, I think we brought this up about six months ago, so we could review it in August, and we haven't, too.
Yeah, I did, and I wanna be able to bring it back, and I wanna advise council and the board. The consensus yesterday was, hey, look, we're in this development cycle, we got people in there that own property that are developers, so forth and so on, and they're saying, look, don't, it's, it's time to change the city. We limit ourselves to ten stories on a hundred and twenty-fifth street, or four stories on Biscayne Boulevard, and four stories on Northwest Seventh Avenue. It's time to be dynamic and bodacious in our thinking, and think outside the box, and there's no reason why we can't go twenty and thirty stories, okay? I wanna have a wealthy city helping poor people, then a poor city helping nobody. And the only way we're gonna get that is if we get proper development in here and take the bull by the horns. Now, I, I don't know how much more I can do to shake up everybody, or shake up the city and say, hey, look, I drive downtown, and I see these beautiful buildings up there, affordable workforce housing, beautiful. I go to Sunny Isles, I, I go to Aventura, I see gorgeous projects. The hue and the cry in this city for the last forty years was, oh, the traffic. Oh, my God, the traffic, how am I gonna get home? It's gonna take me ten minutes more. Well, I got news for you, folks, we have the traffic here. But they're not stopping here, they're not spending their money here, they're going to Aventura, Sunny Isles, Miami Beach, Surfside, what have you. So I think we have to see if we can move this date up, if it's a possibility. Bring it before the council, let's see what happens after the election. But the council and the planning department, this is what you're hearing out there from the citizens right now. There's a few people out there that stool the old guard, that don't want anything higher than four stories, that wanna look at these dumps that are out there, that we're putting people in. And, 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 we have the energy last night in the CRA, and people are saying, please, please, let's move forward, let's change it. Like, this, this project going right now, he says he can only go four stories, I realize there's added cost to go another thirty-five feet.
Yes, and telling us that our market doesn't allow-
But I, I, I would like if you, if, if there's a way we can review that and get this thing moving faster, earlier, bring it up before the council. I, I, I'd be more than happy to speak before them, I don't know if we're-